I think we can go.
Okay, calls me to order to rise for question play.
United Nations, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a one nation, not a god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My goodness.
The next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? For all current agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Support it.
Move to support it, approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Very nice call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion taken. Next item is approval of the minutes for the meeting of July 9.
If no one has any corrections, then I will make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
I'll support that.
Move to support it, approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Very nice call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion taken. Next item is the financial report.
We began the month with $282,946.46, taking in receipts of $64,018.39, and we made disbursements in the amount of $25,178.76, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $321,786.9.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Very nice call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion taken. We have no correspondence. Let's move on to old business. That is a park update. Any discussion? On the board over here is a copy of the latest projection for the park that our consultant has drawn up. And just trying to get some discussion or feedback if that's the direction you think we want to end up in. It's uh, somebody to start this process, then it goes back to the committee department. See if everything's good and move ahead to revise our park master plan. And start the procedure to implement in phases, depending on what we do and how we do it. You can tell by looking at it that it's a pretty expensive project. I did talk with Pam. She feels very strongly that there's a good chance we could get the grant. But before we get there, first he has to finish this. And before we can do basically anything on site, we're gonna need a site plan, a drainage plan. If anybody else in the township wants to do something. So, nothing's gonna happen real quick. Just to wait. We're a little late. We gotta wait till we're done with our park discussion. So, that just then opened it up. I'll turn it over to county.
Well, that is, that's what we covered in the last meeting. There were a lot of comments that Pam took back. Things that we wanted more clearly defined on the map, some ideas that we had. Priorities set, kind of phase one, phase two, phase three, as we've inquired it. And um, but you're right, we have to, if we define this, and she comes back with a little bit more definition here. And then we have a large process to go through, the rezoning of the front part of the property. And then um, we were, a lot of, a lot of us were hoping just to get to where it says on this map, the seasonal gate, and kind of phase things in from there. I know we all want to get down to the Bell River and get our fishing deck and canoe launch going, but there's many things to be done before that. And maybe we can get some volunteer help in some areas that need to be looked after, mold this or that. But that will, that will come with time. I think it's in Pam's hands and the township board's hands as to how they want to proceed and what the planning commission has to say. And then of course it has to go to the county planning commission for their, not approval, but let them know what we're doing here.
Is it possible we could get this further number to the planning commission?
The planning commission, yes.
Or next week?
Yes. Yes, maybe.
They gave you a whole bunch of stuff there for rezoning.
Yes. Well, I wondered, as far as volunteer help, because I had coordinated, I don't know, maybe about six different meet and greets for Casco Township neighbors. What if we coordinated some meet and greets at the park and bring your hose or clippers or whatever it is, and bug spray and have, you know, a little hot dog cookout or something and have a meet and greet there?
Yes. Or you could bring your clippers and you could meet in my gazebo.
Sure. About yes. Doesn't need to be greater?
Yes, yes. So much needs to be done. We probably won't be doing anything on site for a while, but even tonight, there were wonderful ideas floating back and forth about things that you wanted to see there that wouldn't really cost us anything, would they? That would be just all volunteer work and that sort of thing.
And getting to know you.
Mm-hmm. And but I think what we, we need to keep our ducks in a row as far as keeping the process going, one step at a time with the planning commission and with Pam coming back with the, with the, not the corrections, but kind of the additions that we wanted, the clarifications. And we were kind of caught by surprise in that last meeting. I think she had us confused with somebody else when she said, well, we, you know, we're going to meet on the 23rd and I went, "We are? Okay, but I don't turn her down. She's coming from Grand Haven, so whenever she wants to come, we call the meetings." And then we get what we want and share what we can. So Megan, remind me to give you your information and map to take home with you and look at. And no, there's not so much changing there. We're, we're just identifying some, there was the um, the connection to the bridge to bay trail that they wanted to make a little bit clearer what it was going to be and where it was going to be. That's what we have to do with the front of the park when it's rezoned. We have to figure out where we're gonna put the sign and all of those things. But I think that's a little bit down the road.
Right. So, so the main thing we're, we want to do first is get the rezoning done.
It'll take a couple months.
And go from there and go to the planning commission.
And then, and then we need the site plan.
Right.
Because when we had the site plan.
Then you could.
Then we'll see what needs to be leveled, what needs to be cleared, what, what can stay as far as the greenery. Certainly don't want to chop down any trees that, you know, or anything like that. And take a look at what's already there. We might have some treasures there that we're not even aware of yet, that we don't want to disturb. We only want to add to. And yes, so.
So Bill, what's the timeframe for this initial phase of the rezoning? So people understand that this isn't gonna happen in six weeks or eight weeks or two months?
Well, the rezoning itself is gonna take at least three months. But while that's in process, the consultant can work on revising this to a final addition. Once that's done and the board approves it, then we can look into phases, grants, a site plan. If anybody develops any property in the township that's not farm or residential, they have to have an approved site plan before they can really do anything. And you have to have a drainage plan. And we're probably good there, but once you start doing it, then you're gonna have to go to, it used to be the DEQ, now it's EGO, for a permit from them to do the work inside the area. So there's a lot of steps to do. I'm not super knowledgeable about the grants and Pam is. So, I don't know what part she's gonna go for first, as far as that goes. But hopefully she'll tell us the best way to go.
Sounds like maybe next spring is kind of gonna be the, you know, grab your neighbors and grab your shadows and come on in.
I don't know if the timelines for the grants are the same for improvement. But if they are, you have to have it by April 1. You don't get them until December. Find out who wins.
Right.
Is that pretty much for every single grant that's applied for?
Well, it is for acquisition. I do not know.
I know it's, it's gonna take a while to develop park, but if we want to do like a cleanup, like to just pick up trash and we could do that anytime.
Yeah, you can do that.
Or even melt the soil. I mean, instead of having the walkway being a twisted ankle, you level it out.
And Linda, Linda Teen, who works with me, was talking today about a gathering of plastic articles somewhere. And then her church did it, or the 4H did it, or Hertz Point did it, someone, it should have been her. But the idea was you gather all this plastic that were thrown away every day and they get so many pounds of it and they make a, they make a bench out of it. They take some place and they make a bench out of it, which.
They were doing that in Richmond.
Yeah.
The guy that did it was in Marysville.
Sometimes unfortunately that stuff costs more than if you just went and bought a bench.
Yeah, that's, sometimes I think these grants are rewarded by the time you get done with all these grant things. You might as well just have a hot dog fundraiser.
Right.
Which is the way we've always done things.
So that's where we stand. I can't give you a firm timeline. We're just trying to take it one step at a time. And uh, but with that much paving involved, by the way, all the earth moving to bring everything into the proper grade, especially the walking trails, you're looking at a lot of money. And uh, the park's never gonna be self-sufficient, but as we get all or part of it done, we'd like to keep enough in reserve for the last number of years. I mean, you don't want it so you spend all your money. And in two or three years after you open it, you can't afford to keep it open. You know, that's worth a case. So, we have to keep that in mind also. But as much paving and other stuff as there is, but nothing's fast, especially once you get involved with DEQ, which doesn't exist anymore for some reason. Now it's EGO. So they could spend millions of dollars changing all the stationary.
Yes, just what I was thinking.
But would, like the DEQ permits, like for us, I mean, like getting a park lot in would probably be the first fix because we want people off front of our highway.
But no, but we don't, usually we're making property, commercial, industrial. If they haul in a little bit of fill, we don't say much, but we don't let them develop anything without approved site plan. And then a permit. In this case, it would be a site improvement permit, not a building permit, other than maybe the pavilion. So you can't tell other people you can't do it and then you say.
But I guess my question, do we need DEQ or EGO for the stuff right up near the road? Or since it's hooked to wherever, we have to do it for everything?
Pam told me, you don't need it for the drainage plan, but you need it for the construction because if it alters the runoff rate into the river. I don't know if that's a big deal or not. I know it's not as big a deal as if you were gonna put a dock that's actually mounted into the river.
Yeah.
Those are a big deal, very expensive. So you can let them hang over the edge, but.
Yeah, well, I guess my question is the initial development, like a park lot, do we need this thing?
We need a site plan approved.
Well, yeah, I know, site plan.
And uh, and you don't get a site plan, operational, what?
Is this a site plan?
That's no.
No.
That's just a preliminary drawing, preliminary drawing and where we want things situated.
We would have to hire, once Pam gets done, we would have to hire an engineer to do our site plan.
Well, Pam says she does.
Oh, she does it?
But he of course will send out for bids.
Yep, I told her, give me a price when we're ready and then.
And we'll, we'll check around.
Not that I don't trust her, but I have no idea.
Yeah.
I know what other people pay for their site plans and they're pretty costly.
Yeah, of course they are.
So drainage plan's the same thing. She said she can do it, which is good. So we'll see what happens.
So, so the first step is a site plan, right?
Uh, first step's rezoning.
Rezoning, rezoning of the.
Okay. The second step is to move ahead on this and get a final approval. She calls this the master plan.
Okay, the first, because I'm scared I don't want to interrupt you, I'm just trying to catch up. The first thing is that we have to have, get zoned, right?
Just the two acres by the road.
As a park?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's commercial.
Okay, so that gets done first?
Yeah, the planning commission is gonna start next Tuesday.
Oh, that hasn't been done yet then?
No, no. We're working on it tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just, I'm just a consultant.
Yeah.
So the first thing we do is we get it zoned, commercial work.
Get it all zoned, recreational.
Then we have to work with the planning commission, decides what they want, trees left or hills moved.
No, that's the part.
We have to follow the site plan.
So the next is the site plan.
Well, the next is to get a final addition of what's up there on the board.
Right. And that turns that into a site plan.
And we'll get a couple prices, then we can develop a site plan and a drainage plan.
Because I know you weren't here.
But there was a lot to do with elevation and stuff.
But then you're gonna get. I told her that, you know, we need roughly some kind of cost association, especially if you're talking phases. So is phase one a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty? I have no idea. So you can kind of correlate that because you're gonna need that anyway if you're gonna go for a grant. And uh, and you gotta look at the timeline of the grant. Are you gonna do it, you know, wait for the grant, yes or no? It's very hard to get an improvement grant compared to an acquisition grant. So hopefully, I'll go with, if Pam's optimistic, we will give it a shot. But it has to be big enough that it's worth the aggravation. You gotta jump a million hoops to get involved with that grant stuff.
So is the drainage stuff inclusive in the site plan?
The two are separate, but they're connected.
Kind of an addendum to the site plan.
Okay, so once those two are done, then you know, you need to haul in.
Haul in, take out, flat, make flat, this and that and that. Take a look at your tree stands and all of that sort of thing, yeah.
And I think that that portion's gonna be a lot of money because when you look at how much trail, walking trail there is, and I've been in there, you're gonna have to do a lot of work with the, the ground to get it to the proper grade. Number one, the one part has to be ADA.
What's ADA?
Anti-cap accessible.
This part right here where we're going to have the first dock and kayak launch. We're only going to have one kayak launch there. These two, well, this one here and that one there, those are just fishing docks. They're not swimming poles. They're fishing docks.
Especially the ADA portion has to be very specific in the grade.
The grade, yeah.
Okay. Now, if you have a walking trail, it doesn't have to be ADA because it's like a secondary trail. You know, it's gotta be walkable, but it doesn't have to meet that type of grade specification.
Unfortunately, she deals with these sort of things all the time, so we're kind of a step ahead that she, that she knows everything and will get to know it more intimately as she goes along. And another nice thing is that when St. Clair County Parks put out their brochure this summer, they, they called us because they were just putting it together and all of a sudden Lori Ashenberg, who does put it together, said, "There's a new park in Casco." So, so our park got in there, which will help us get grants, so she says. So that was very nice of her.
Well, they used our picture on it for another park.
Well, that's all right. We won't charge them.
Yeah, they showed nature watch, but they showed our dedication and pictures, yeah.
Does the site plan have to involve the whole park or can it involve parts of the park?
You know, I asked her because usually if you do a drainage plan, you further had to do it for the whole thing. Because it's very costly and how many times you want to do it. Plus the walking trail pretty much covers the whole thing anyway. So I would say probably the site plan would cover the whole thing. Now, if you do it in phases, your site plan approved, that's approved, is only good for a year. Then you have to resubmit if you don't continue the work. And that's okay.
Yeah.
But at least you have it to go by, so it'd be very simple to resubmit it. So, that's where we stand right now. Does anybody, you know, include the audience? Anything that, you know, they don't like down here?
No, I think it looks good.
Here Megan, you take this so you have a.
How long is it possible to get a copy from the planning commission and our planner for next week?
Sure.
I don't know if I put one in there or not, because we have some, we have some that are black and white.
Yes, well, and that, that might be even easier for you to read.
Yeah, like, yeah, I love the notice from the commission to have that.
I have, I have tons of copies here.
Plus our planner.
Yeah.
But all you're dealing with is the planning commission if you rezon.
Rezoning of the first front two acres.
No, I understand. There's not a site plan.
Yeah, not yet.
You've got one rezoning to go forward.
Now, can I segue just a little bit? Megan, did you have a question?
I had a concern that I wanted to bring up. So I live across from the park.
Yes.
I'm on the other side of the river. And I was wondering if there were any measures going to be taken for our privacy. So essentially from the fishing docks, you look in our backyard.
I don't know how we would.
Okay.
But you, you live up on the hill, right, on the.
Yes, we do. Us and the, the other neighbors whose property pops up on the other side of the river.
So you're up high?
Yes.
So they.
Uh, you still see pretty much everything. Is there any signage that we, that might be on there that would denote us as private property? The main concern is when the kayakers get in the river.
Well, that's true.
That they end up at the park and not on our side.
That's true.
Do we feel like that will be pretty clearly marked that this is the park, this is where you should get off?
For your property, it'd be up to you.
Yeah, we could do our property, but where you, with the kayak launch and such, that will be pretty well signed that this is where you get on and off.
I don't know how early in the process that kayak launch is coming about.
Yeah.
I feel it's a few years out at least.
I think you're safe. I guess I plant some trees now.
Good point.
So. At least a couple years.
Yeah.
Yeah. If everything goes according to plan, you know, for, it'll be a couple of years, quite literally.
It's not a major concern, but just something we wanted to raise.
I plant arborvitae on your side of the river. That's just me. I might, I might be there. But talking about planting, um, we might have an opportunity next July, because it's always in July. A lady who lives in the township, who is part of the St. Clair County Master Gardeners Program. Uh, she's asked me to put my garden on the tour next July. And she asked me if there are any other gardeners in the township that would like to volunteer their gardens. Because what the master gardeners like to do is concentrate on a certain area and not be running hither and thither all over St. Clair County. So this time we're going to be concentrating, I think, on Casco Township, maybe a little bit in Chinatownship. So if you know anybody who would like to volunteer their gardens for just a tour, it doesn't have to be perfect, it just has to be yours. And what, want to invite, um, I think they charge $10 or whatever and put it in their club coffers. Um, the last time I did this, they had an artisan on my back porch who happened to be Sandra Mayron. And she does pottery in St. Clair County. You can see her little fairy gardens and houses all over, all over the county. Um, and they'll have a master gardener in your yard to show people around if you, if you so choose. So let me know if anybody wants to volunteer their garden for next July. And I will let her know and maybe that will, that will ensure that we get a garden club trip around St. Clair, Casco Township.
It depends on the weather.
Hmm? Well, July is not, yeah, it's not the best time in the gardens. They're kind of sleeping right then. But it does give the, a gardener time to prepare, so.
Is it a flower garden or any kind of?
Oh, any kind. Um, there's, there's one lady I hope to convince of this because she has a lovely potager garden in her backyard, lovely vegetables and fenced and very nicely done. So, um, I've gone, I've gone on garden tours and I've looked at plots of tomato plants. It can be whatever your garden is. It's all very personal, so.
Put me on your list.
Okay, thank you.
And gives me enough notice.
Well, that's what I say, we go here, you know, what could happen? Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else have anything, input, questions, in the park? I guess my only question is, and I know it's gonna be prioritized, is the sports court. I don't know how appropriate that is since our population's not very large and that's way on the side of the township. I don't know.
Because people kind of all agree that we want to get the, the pergola or gazebo or whatever it's called. We want to get this first.
Understand.
And all that. I, this is negotiable.
So you're gonna have the parking lot and the picnic area and the gazebo first before they think about a sports court?
That's what I'm hoping.
That's what the plan is right now.
Yeah, right.
So we're gonna do it in phases. What's in phase one? How much is the projected cost? Are we gonna go for a grant and then move on? So.
You might want to see how many people actually use the park once you've finished phase one and if you really think that many more will come in for phase two.
I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's just a thought. If nobody shows up with phase one.
So are we needing to look for grants?
Well, that's, we heard our consultant does that for a list.
Yeah.
Kayaking and fishing is, is individual, you know, those are activities.
Priorities.
Beyond just a picnic or, you know, yeah, the parking lot, the pavilion, the gazebo, and a bathroom.
Yeah, it's, it's like a port-a-potty.
Yeah, yeah.
How long does she stay with us as a consultant?
Well, I assume we have to compensate her for any work after our original contract, which is in place right now, is supposed to get us through this whole process, get the final master plan of the park. And I don't have the list in front of me. There may be a few other things on there. That's what our contract gets us to now.
Okay.
Now, if you want her to do a site plan, drainage plan, you're gonna have to pay her, same as any other engineer.
I just wonder how long she would stay on.
Well, she'll stay as long as we keep paying her. Sure.
We pay 2,500 for Kim's trade during the last grant.
Maybe a little cheaper if she goes along, but maybe the same.
It's a process.
Grant writing is a very.
I was just asking how long she's gonna stay on. It's gonna be setting herself with these grants and everything. It'd be nice to know if we had somebody who was interested in that. So when she decides to go on through next phase, we have somebody here that can continue in her path looking for grants.
Okay. Okay.
And then they grant for everything.
They do, but it has to be large enough to make it worthwhile because they always puts a lot of strings on them. So if you're not making considerable amount of money off of it. So if you're not making considerable amount of money off of it.
Yeah, the fire department lights them all the time. We had, we had three guys in the department that, that's all they did when they were on days off.
That's what school does.
Look for grants and write grants and paper like this thick in books.
Those do too.
Yep.
That they would send and sometimes they got them and sometimes they didn't.
So, is part of the grants going to include clearing up log jams and moving debris?
You know, I haven't asked her.
I think that's going to be a different consortium that's going to get townships together to, in a cooperative. And then they'll, the townships will come together and decide what's the best way to attack that.
Yeah, I had thought maybe it would be six rivers since they, you know, concentrate on the river.
Well, they might coordinate it. But since we don't have that much river in our township, our costs are not astronomical. I'm sure China's is very, very much bigger. And Columbus too. Columbus has got a huge grant.
Yeah, four hundred fifty thousand.
Four hundred fifty thousand. Because the river's washing out each hill and there's homes on the hill. So I think the plan is to take some of those trees and make like a wall to keep the water from washing out the hill. But it's a very large grant.
Yep.
We don't have that problem the same way here. When they did the Bell River Watershed Plan, they estimated at that time, which was six, seven years ago, you know, in the five to eight thousand dollar range to clean it. Now, is that an accurate number? I have no idea. I did get bids to fly it with a drone, get pictures, coordinate the GPS with the property owners on both sides. But we're not going to go there until our consultant says, you know, that would be a good thing to do. But I did get bids, just to get an idea of what it would cost. Now, there's less than two miles of river, but if you measure it, because it's so crooked, it's like twenty-three thousand feet. Okay? Which is like almost five miles of river, but it's in the two mile stretch. So, we'll see what happens there. I'm well aware of the trees. I did call China. They said at this time, they're not planning on doing anything right away. Once you get to East China, it's open to the river. So after us, it's China Township is the blockage. So, they may be going to do something. But when I talked to them, I don't know, like a year ago, they said we had no plan, they have no plans right now to do anything. So, that's where we stand on that.
Does anybody north of us have plans?
Uh, other than Columbus got that huge grant.
Further, I mean, because apparently there's a possibility of coming all the way up.
Well, yeah. Well, that's what they probably want to do.
Well, I know when you get, the other side of Columbus, when we used to have meetings, they all, they were all doing stuff mostly with volunteers. But that's like ninety-five percent farmland where you can drive right up to the river. Which makes it very easy. We do not have that option. So, that's all I know. Okay. Thank you. Moving on. If no one has a problem, we have a guest here tonight. And he's sitting there playing on his cell phone. Mr. Jeff White, head of the EMS, is here. And we're waiting to hear what he has to say.
Returning emails, actually, today after, after a busy day.
You tell Jeff.
Just, just a couple of, just a couple of updates. Thank you for always letting me stop in and just be able to report for a few minutes. My schedule doesn't always allow me to pre-schedule things because I have to run into many emergencies and other things that are going on. Just wanted to give the board an update, just on a couple of brief things going on at EMS. I think all good news items. For the, for the purpose of the public, the EMS responded, I looked at a, in June, twenty-three times here in Casco Township and in July seventeen times. Their average response time is about seven and a half minutes for that two-month period. So things continue to go well with regards to that. The EMS recently took delivery of a, of a new ambulance. Paramedic unit these days costs, the EMS about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to purchase the actual vehicle. In this case, this vehicle was a, was an addition to the fleet. So, we had to buy all the equipment for the inside of the vehicle as well. That equipment runs an additional forty to fifty thousand dollars for that equipment that goes inside. So, so altogether, the total cost on this particular vehicle was about two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to, to add the vehicle to fleet. Now, we have seven ambulances in the, at the EMS. The EMS is also in the process right now. We're actively hiring both EMTs and paramedics at, at the EMS. We want to put on an additional vehicle that is staffed. In other words, we have, right now, we have three vehicles that are staffed twenty-four hours a day. We want, the other vehicles are, are, when we get, when we get busy and those vehicles go out, folks are called in from their home to come in off-duty and, and staff those vehicles. We don't have anybody that responds really by private vehicle to the scene of emergencies. They're either, they're either at the station working or they're called to the station to stand by when all the, when all the units go out. We want to add a vehicle that would actually be a staffed vehicle at EMS, which we plan to do as soon as we can get the people hired and trained, which will be a twelve-hour-a-day vehicle. It'll operate from ten AM to ten PM. Why those hours? Really, we're able to look at all of our runs based on data and, and generate reports that show us that actually eighty percent of our run volume occurs in that twelve-hour period. So we know that's the, that's the time of day when we need additional personnel and vehicles actually sitting at the station and on the road versus, versus the call. There's, there's no, Casco Township doesn't pay anything out of pocket as far as their taxes or, or, or money from the residents that come into EMS. So there's no additional cost to your community to do it, basically. So taxpayers here don't have to worry about some additional increase in their, in their tax dollars. When I talk about current increase costs. Those costs are paid for when we build people's insurance for, for emergency medical services. So those are really the two, the, the big items that have been going on this summer at the EMS. Like you say, I, I think the call volume increase really has, is really to do with the increase in population in our entire service area. More people moving in, more people building homes, more businesses going up and things of that nature. And, you know, since, since two thousand eight, there's kind of been a steady influx of, of people, businesses and building in, in all of our communities. And so I think we're just seeing the, the backside of that now, which is the increase in each emergency medical service. What we don't want to see is our response times drop. And, and, you know, or, I'm sorry, response times go up. We'd like to see a drop of more. We don't want to see our response times increase because call volume gets high and then it takes longer for them to get there. So by putting this vehicle on, we should be able to keep response times right about where they're at. Now, the new, the, the additional vehicle will be stationed right at our building on Thirty-Two Mile Road. We've got plenty of room there in that new building for the additional crew and, and vehicles there.
Could you describe some of the technology in your, you're quite a...
Wow. So, one of the, a, a, a couple of the real quick pieces that, that, that people may not know exist. So our monitors now, we do, that we monitor your heart within the vehicle. We actually are able to do twelve-lead EKG monitoring. So as opposed to what we call three or four lead, which is just the, the leads that go in four spots on your chest, whereas you do twelve leads on, on the person. That by itself is pretty great technology to have. But the, the really good part of that technology now is we actually transmit that from patient's side to the emergency room. And that, that is, can be received by the emergency room and what's called the cardiac catheterization lab all at the same time. And so when they see a heart attack going on in the field, they can have the cardiac catheterization lab ready. And in many cases anymore, when somebody's having a heart attack, we, if we stop in the ER at all, it's briefly. There's times when they don't even take the patient off our stretcher in the emergency room, and we actually bypass the emergency room to go right to what's called the cath lab, which is where they actually take the blockages out of the heart. Every minute that can be saved, you know, doing that saves heart muscle. And, and in fact, you know, makes it, so you have a better quality of life is what we hope following your, following your heart attack. The, right now, just as information, people ask me all the time, what hospitals do we take people to? And the answer is any hospital you want to go to. I mean, that's the simple, easy answer. We'll take you anywhere that you receive normal medical care. There are situations, like in the instance of a, of a, of a, of a heart attack that we've seen in the field and, and, and recognized on our monitor and sent forward to a hospital with cath lab, that we may offer suggestion to you that you go to a hospital that has a cath lab ready versus a hospital that might not have that technology. At the end of the day, the choice remains yours. But, but, you know, we might make that as a strong suggestion as far as where you might, where you might go. The other, the other really, you know, something that in all of my years of EMS, if you'd asked me forty years ago when I started doing this, you know, if I ever thought that, you know, paramedics would be given a surgical tool to drill into people's bones to administer medicine into their, into the bone marrow, I would have thought you were probably also seeing aliens regularly, you know, kind of thing. And, and, and what I, what I would suggest to you is today, we are doing that. We're doing it actually monthly, where we have very critical patients. It's hard to gain IV access on them in the, in the traditional way in, in many of our cases. And so actually, we use this surgical drill that we're actually able to drill into the bone just below the knee and the bone marrow and actually administer medication that way to people in, in emergencies. And like you say, I would have never believed anything like that would happen in my career. So those are probably two of the, the big new items, I guess, that are, that, that are out there. They're not items thankfully we have to use often. Those are the, the smaller percentage of what we do on any, on any given day. Ninety percent of our runs at, really, any EMS agency, I don't think we're any different than anywhere else, remains very, very routine. Interestingly, the number one type of run we go to these days, it used to be falls. That was for years and years, that was the number one type of run. It was followed closely by difficulty in breathing and probably car accidents if you had to pick the top three. Today, the number one type of call we go to is, is what we classify as behavioral emergencies. It's people that are having various different behavioral and, and psychological issues. But, you know, and you can blame that on a number of different factors, but that is the number one type of call that we go to today.
Do you have a lot of Narcan runs?
We do. I think the last time I looked, we were averaging about four percent of our total call volume was overdoses. It makes, you know, it certainly is making the news because really, you know, the, the terrible effect it's having, you know, on young people. To, to some degree, we're actually losing a generation, you know, over heroin and, and opioid abuse. And, and so it is newsworthy. But it isn't as high in number, at least in this area, as you might think. We are, you know, we are seeing, we are seeing a number of runs. I think it's plateaued of late. It doesn't seem to be getting worse, but it's really bad. So it's not getting better, you know, either. We're, we're working with everybody we can, from, from police officials to social service agencies to not only provide the Narcan when people need it and hopefully be able to start their breathing again, which is usually what the problem is when we're giving Narcan, is they're not breathing any longer. It works very effectively and, and oftentimes, we can save young people that, that have overdosed. But we're trying really hard to work on the backend to make sure that we're, we're taking steps to try to, to try to help them and their families to get help, you know, after the event. Because really, otherwise, we have terrible recidivism with some, with some patients where we actually are there multiple times at the same time.
So behavioral, are you referring to suicide attempts?
Yeah, so behavioral emergencies can be anything from suicide attempts to people that have, you know, chronic psychiatric kind of problems. There, there used to be a lot more psychiatric hospitals that were in our state. I, I can't speak nationally, but certainly in our state, there were hospitals that treated folks with various psychiatric emergencies. Now, many folks that might have in the past been institutionalized are being treated at home or in outpatient kind of settings or in foster care or assistive living is what I meant to say. Assistive living, not foster care. Assistive living kind of situation. And they're in our community more relatively. And, and so we just see more and more requests for service to those, to those folks. When someone acts out a little bit, they're really not, they really do have an illness and they're not, they're not causing a police issue. So they're not, they're not, you know, you can't arrest them for anything. They're really not doing anything wrong. It's their illness that's causing the problem. And so we end up taking them to the hospital. Unfortunately, right now, we're in a really terrible situation where, where it becomes a real revolving door. We take them in the hospital, they see them, they, they turn them over to a social worker. They might do some corrective issues with their meds and then they're turned, you know, back loose to home, if you will, for, you know, for outpatient treatment, and then we end up called back again, so.
But you get the calls because of violence or...
Yeah, usually, usually acting out, yeah, yeah. I, I, I like to avoid violence. I, I really have a, a worry about these folks that are out there and I don't want to categorize them as being violent people. They, they, really, it's more, it's more of an acting out due to disease that, that we see. And, and so normally, they are controllable folks that have mental illness just by, you know, knowing how to kind of diffuse the situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jeff. When someone says what hospital, they just, your people say, I don't care, just give me to a hospital.
Yeah, yeah, some people don't have any, you know, some people don't have any preference. And, you know, then usually we'll use the closest, you know, the closest facility that can handle their illness. So it's, you know, we'll look at what their illness is and we might say, in this case, based on what's going on, this hospital has these services available.
Yeah, that tells you.
But normally, we'll just then, when they, when they don't have a preference, we'll normally go to the closest facility. But I will tell you that, boy, a, a great, great majority of patients that we respond to have a relationship with a physician who has a relationship with some hospital. And so in all of those cases, we try to honor those wishes. We've had people go as far away as, you know, Ann Arbor and Children's Hospital and Royal Oak Belmont and St. John's. St. John's is fairly populous in this area, in your, in your township, because you can jump right on ninety-four and go down to the, you know, the St. John's Hospital there.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
We have, we have known one another since nineteen seventy-four.
Got it.
Jeff, don't you recognize me?
No.
Maybe not with all the beard.
Yeah.
Dennis.
Dennis!
Yeah.
Dennis was at Detroit with us or whatever. Seventy-five years ago. And I did not, I did not recognize you with all that white hair, my friend.
We've known since seventy-four.
Dennis and I have known each other for a long time, so.
Yeah, I'm still lied to.
Got it. Well, good to see you again. Take care all. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Hopefully you stay out of any of the rambles as well.
I could tell you, I could tell you when it's coming down the road.
Okay, moving on. New business. Item A, accept the two thousand nineteen audit. In your pack was a copy of the audit. Nobody called with any questions. Looked pretty black and white. Mr. King, I've mentioned before that most communities, he does not go for this presentation. If you thought there was a need, he would do it. And I said I would call him if there was a problem, so I didn't call him. Yeah, I like how he explains everything out. I mean, a light person can take a look at it. So, there was no problem doing it. The numbers came out good, so I think we're good to go. So, we need a motion to accept the audit. I made a motion to, to accept the audit, the two thousand nineteen audit?
Support it.
Moving, supported to accept the two thousand nineteen audit. Is there any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And Conley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. I didn't mean...
Bill, I just want to note, I don't know if anybody looked at this, but it's just amazing how our finances have improved. And if you look at the Park and Rec Fund, this is after the purchase of the park. And the attention of someone to help us design the park. It's marvelous.
Yeah.
And this year, it's, eighteen thousand dollars came in from the...
What do you think? Mr. Rumeno's...
Mr. Rumeno's sharp pencil, we're back.
Oh, everybody does what they can.
New offices, new furniture.
Wonderful.
All kinds of, the lot's better. It's really quite amazing what has happened in the furniture.
We got some bridges and culverts.
Got two, got two.
Yeah.
Finally, some stone and claw, maybe.
Yes.
Yep, we didn't get to Bill yet, but we will.
We will.
On a paved road from one end to the other.
Yeah.
Marvelous.
Okay. Moving on. Item B. We had a five-year contract with King and King to do that audit, and that expired this year. So I spoke with Mr. King, and he sent me a proposed contract for four years, the exact same price as we paid the last five years, which I thought was pretty good.
Yeah, that is good.
So we have a price of $6,500 a year. So the time you add these, that would make nine years, and we'll all pay the same amount. So we would need a motion to approve the contract as outlined by King.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, um, the audit contract with King and King for $6,500 a year for four years.
Support it. Moving to support it, to approve the contract. We're glad to have him on board. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Pat? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item C. Every year, we have to request our share of the countywide park mileage. And this year comes to 18,029 dollars. So here is the form, and, uh, so we need the board approval to request the park mileage money.
Support.
Moving to support it, to request the park mileage money for 2019. Is there any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat? Yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Uh, we, as we mentioned before, two acres out of the 20 acres is currently zoned commercial on our park on Fairmore Highway, and we need to correct that, so it's already, it's all zoned, recreational open space. And, uh, so we're starting the process next week, it's Planning Commission. So all we need is direction tonight from the board to move ahead. I just gave you a little map, kind of shows the two acres up in the front, and, uh, if you look in our zoning ordinance, it does not allow parks in commercial zoning. So it's a glitch we have to take care of.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve the rezoning of the park property, two acres up near Fairmore Highway.
Well, Joe, yeah, I think what I need is a motion to move ahead with the process. Because basically, we're going to vote on the actual rezoning.
Right, exactly.
In about three months.
Ah, it's a good problem.
So we just need direction from the board to move ahead.
Oh, okay. You don't need them.
So I'm going to just scratch this.
Yeah.
Joe, you just want to reframe what you, what you want to say.
Yeah, I made a motion that we start the process to rezon...
No, it's correct.
To two acres up on Fairmore Highway.
But I'll support that.
Moving to support it. A motion to start the rezoning process for the two acres zone commercial?
I, I have one quick question.
Uh-huh.
Who owns this odd, right along the interchange, shared at odd, like...
Which one?
Right here, that's right along the, um, the interchange.
105070?
Yeah.
The lady that owns the BP.
Oh, that would be good. Okay.
So she owns that. Okay, are we all set, ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
No.
Uh, did I tell you roll call on that, or not?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Well, I asked you, she always asks me that. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. All right, that'd be Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Item E. A short while back, we approved three new streetlights from Isen Road because they completed the paving. So the only intersection that was not lighted was at the corner of Mayor. And we didn't approve it at the time because we requested that, since we're doing the Mayor-St. Clair Highway, I was hoping China Township, our neighbor, would do the Mayor of Isen. They've declined. So if you want a light there, we got to pay for it.
Let's pay for it.
So I have not been able to get a hold of Mr. Ferguson for two weeks, but I need board approval because it's going to cost us $12 a month forever and ever for the light, and sign up for that one also. So that's why it's on the agenda.
Did I make a motion to approve to get that light on Mayor Road and Isen?
I'll support it.
Moving to support it, to work with DTE to get a light at the corner of Mayor and Isen. Any discussion? A roll call vote?
What is that? Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay. The next one, I really didn't give you much information.
No.
Basically, by September is the deadline. We have to apply for local road matching funds. Now, in the past, most years, we do ditching. Unfortunately, due to flooding over by the river, our road commissions really stressed, so it's hard to get the ditching done. So I inquired, and I gave you the numbers. On St. Clair Highway, we have one mile that's really rough. The others aren't bad. Now, you can go an inch and a half, and the total cost will be 120, of which we'll pay 70. Or you can go two inches, where the total cost is 155. But once you get above an inch and a half, it triggers a different matching fee, so it's still half, so it'll be 77,500. So you're getting a lot more work for $7,000. So you guys give me direction tonight, and I'll have all the stuff filled out and ready for approval in September. So I didn't bring them tonight because I wanted to make sure that's what you wanted to do. So it seems like a pretty good deal. I think the timing is good, other than I'd like to do more ditching. We do have some money available. We have two or three jobs this year, but I don't know when they're going to get at them. So, and I guess the consensus is good enough at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, two inches, yeah.
Oh, general consensus?
Yep. Okay. And that is the, really, the only bad, really bad mile. And it is rough.
And when you do stuff like that, it's better to go better than go cheap. You're redoing it again.
Two inches.
So up to an inch and a half, they'll only match up to $5,000. That's what it would cost in seven. Over an inch and a half, they'll go half. So it's 77,500.
Overpassed, no.
So that's from the overpassed and over. Okay.
Good. This is the motion, because we're spending money.
We're not spending anything.
We're not spending anything. In September, I'll bring it to the board for...
Go to start the process when we get it.
Oh, to start the process, oh.
Okay.
For two inches, right?
Yep. Moving on. Item G. We have to shift a couple people around here on our ZBA and Planning Commission. The first thing we're going to do, hopefully, is Mr. Allegreen, who's been on the ZBA for a number of years, has agreed to jump over to another commission. So we need to accept the resignation of Dale Allegreen from the ZBA.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Dale Allegreen from the Zone Board of Appeals.
Support.
Moving to support it, to accept the resignation of Dale Allegreen, and thank him for his service on the ZBA. Is there any discussion? If you're not, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, and one abstention. Moving on. Item H, ZBA appointment. Mr. James E. Wall, who is the owner of the Corn maze, I don't know, has, has agreed to go on the ZBA. And, uh, so I have him on here for appointment to finish the term vacated by Mr. Allegreen.
I move that we appoint James E. Wall to fill out the term.
I'll support that.
Moving to support it. Point James E. Wall to fill out the term on the ZBA for Mr. Allegreen. Is there any discussion? If you're not, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstaining, motion carries.
Who supported that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item I. We've had a Planning Commission vacancy for a couple months, but because there was some ZBA cases coming up, and there wasn't anything pressing on the Planning Commission, I didn't shift much back yet, but now we need to get the seventh person on there. And I've asked probably 25 people, a couple said maybe, and, and, and they all went no. So Dale Allegreen has agreed to serve on the Planning Commission, so we need to appoint him.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dale Allegreen to the Zone Planning Commission.
Support it.
Moving to support it, appoint Dale Allegreen to the Planning Commission.
Is there a term here that you want to...
Well, he's going to fill the term. It was Mr. Robertson, and then we appointed Mr. Wesselowski, unfortunately, family crisis, he opted out, so it's that term. You could say Kyle Robertson.
Just to fulfill Kyle Robertson, okay.
That would be fine. So we did vote on that, we're good, right?
No, you didn't.
We did vote?
No, because I needed the clarification.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstaining, motion carries. Okay, we're up to item J. Landscaping of the township office, I don't know if Colleen can dive right into it.
We have a lovely little area out front of the new building here, that's approximately 24 feet long by six feet wide, and I would like to work with Courtney Sanger, who is from Marine City Nursery, to get some nice shrubs, maybe one tall, and a few across the front, and dug up a bit and mulched, so that the water does not stand up against the building. And if you have preference for the type of shrubbery that you would like to see, please let me know. I want something that, like a boxwood or the ones that we were looking at today, easily clipped, not too fast growing, and maybe one tall arborvitae by that telephone pole. And then, if you allow me to do that, then the little corner piece, where Dennis has already planted some lovely sedum, I have a bed coming out of my house that I can bring some more sedum in that little area, and I will supply you with a pot of your color choice in that corner, and we can have one pot full of seasonal flowers that would be very nice in the corner, but won't, you know, be invasive or anything. And I would like you to give me a budget, a cost estimate, and I can tell you that Marine City Nursery charges 75% of the total cost of their plants to do the planting. And they will give you a year's guarantee on the plants if they plant them. We plant them ourselves, well, you know...
Is this Courtney you're working with?
Courtney Sanger.
Yep.
She's a very good...
No, I've worked with her.
She's a landscape architect.
I have a question.
And it's just a little bit of a, of a, of a place.
Would you project the planting to happen in...
Fall.
October, probably.
Uh, yes, the end of September.
So could you come back to us in September with a...
Yes.
A cost estimate?
Yes, I can, I just, I, I'd like to know what sort... Well, I, the, the plants...
Why don't you, when...
The plants that I was looking at were retailing around 40, $35, $40 apiece at the moment, and I would estimate that you need no more than four or five, you don't do plantings. You do plantings in threes and fives. I would say no more than five little shrubs across the front, and maybe that one arborvitae. And then mulched nicely.
Our meeting is like the 10th of September, so if you came back, got approval for whatever the cost is going to be...
Yes.
That would give you plenty of time to plant.
Plenty of time, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just going to ask...
Anybody have problems doing that?
But if you have any idea, if you have a favorite shrub, now Brenda mentioned today, I hadn't even thought about that. Brenda had a preference for...
The burning bush?
The burning bush, which is lovely in autumn and fall, but it's deciduous, so you're not going to have any leaves.
Plus the rabbits, whoa.
How about a forsythia bush?
Forsythia, it's way too big, way, way too big, and that takes too much pruning. But your, that little bush that you like, or we could do boxwood, or there's a lovely little bush there that kind of peeks out at a chartreuse color, which might look very nice against the browns. And whatever, whatever we do there, I will match the color of the pot to the shrubs.
Okay.
Hawthorne, thorn tree?
Hawthorne tree. I have a Hawthorne tree, it will take your eye out. No.
Why don't we just leave it up to Courtney and her?
I agree, yeah, appreciate the...
Oh, good. Because she's awesome, and so is Courtney. Oh, good.
I don't have the authority to speak on that.
Okay.
Okay, you'll come back with us.
Consensus is, go out, do what you're going to do, come back in September.
September, with an estimate, is that correct?
Okay, yes.
Okay, moving on. Item K. Unfortunately, the recording secretary...
They're calling, hurry up, you're quick.
On the Planning Commission has retired after a number of years. And I asked Jennifer Anderson if she would be willing to do it, and she has agreed. So I don't know that we necessarily, she's already, we already have a motion in the books somewhere, that whoever does it gets paid $50.
Right.
So if you want a motion approving her, you can. I don't know that it's crucial or vital.
Yeah, I think you do need a motion.
I make a motion to approve, to accept hired Jennifer Anderson as the recording secretary for the Planning Commission.
Support it.
Moving to support it. Is there any discussion?
Yes, let her know she has huge shoes to build.
You better treat her good, she's my deputy.
She was on the zoning work for a long time, she's really good.
Yeah.
She was on the planning commission, wasn't she?
Yeah.
She was on the planning commission.
Once she gets the format, finding, she'll be good.
No, Christine did a very good job.
She, she did.
Yeah.
She is awesome.
I'll probably send something to Chris and away with thank you.
Yeah.
I did call her to give her one last chance to change her mind.
And she, did she go slam?
No, I didn't get through. I had to email her or text.
And there was a reason why, no reply.
Okay.
Yeah, she told me reasons why she's going, I understand.
Yeah, okay, so.
Moving on.
No, no.
Oh, we didn't vote?
Vote.
Okay. We have a motion in support. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstaining, motion carries. Now we're moving on.
Yes.
Paying it in the bills.
I have a quick, I'm going to put a question on the back. Item 29537, 29538, it's a sacred county treasure, trailer fee city and trailer fee state.
That is from the Americana Estates. That is the fees that we collect for school taxes.
Okay, but when they say city, does that?
I think she meant county.
County and state Texas.
Okay.
Park office is a state and park office is a county.
CTY is county.
Oh, oh, there's a, okay, they're not C. I saw CTY.
It's county.
Right.
That's really
I saw city.
Did you think it was?
City.
Oh, city?
No, county.
Okay. My bad.
Okay, no problem.
Not a problem.
I make a motion to approve that bills were submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote?
All right, I'm going to be behind you. Me too. Okay. Okay. Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
And Dan?
Yes. What are trust and agency deposit slips for 44 bucks? I'm just curious.
It's the slips I need to deposit bond money into the trust and agency account. I mean, deposits.
You have to pay for those?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Way too much.
Yeah, I think.
You've got to have money.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay. Moving on. Citizens comments. This is your opportunity, if you have any questions or comments to the board, to do so, we ask that you give us your name, but you don't have to if you don't want to.
I hope you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
We're doing a great job.
Even if I don't, even if I don't get paid.
Dennis, you do a
Dennis!
No.
I know what
It's just a joke.
I know.
You're on TV.
Dennis, you do a good job for us.
Oh, no, Jennifer and I had, she felt so bad.
I know, yeah.
So, pay me next month.
I have a safety concern on Palms Road just north of Adair, that cliff that goes down on the west side of the road. I mean, there isn't any shoulder of the road per se, it's a very short little period of, I guess, level ground, and then it's just this very steep slope. And over the overpass, there is a guide rail, and then it stops. I would love and hope that a guardrail could continue down over that slope. I mean, in the winter time, I know my stepdaughter, when she got a driver's license, it just scared me to death every time we went past there because the slightest little litch of the wheel, you are going straight down. And I just
Well, you asked that before.
I did.
I checked with the road commission.
Yes.